At six P M we will start tonight's board meeting, please stand for the pledge allegiance. All school board members have sent the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Jamie, second by Melissa, those in favor say aye. Motion carries, can we hear Candace? Candace, can you hear us?
Yes.
That's your roll call since you're not here, so we'll go Jennifer.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Jeff, aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. We don't have any citizens comments tonight, so. All school board members have sent their consent agenda. Have you applied, have you filled out the form? You can answer your question. That's fine. There's a procedure that you have to go online, you have to fill out a form. And then you fill out that form and then it's presented to the board before the meeting.
I just have a quick question, my name is Jeff Young, Monticello Township, we've been hearing rumors about a new school in Monticello Township. And we'd like to know some information on that, if you could possibly give us that, please.
Well, then I think you addressed it correctly when you said rumors, so.
Okay, there was a forty year plan and a twenty year plan at the Monticello meetings at the city council. There's no new school out by Burcham Lake?
Well, there's been conversations about expanding nature learning, but we're not building a new school.
I think the city is kind of thinking that big long-term plan of what they intend when there is. Growth in that twenty to forty year plan. The district itself doesn't have any plans for.
So there's no plan for a new school out in.
Discussing the idea of nature-based expanding.
Okay, so if I go back to township and say no school, we're in good shape.
We have not had a discussion about building a new school.
Okay, and what is the workshop about that's after this meeting, and that's not about the new school?
It is about budget cuts.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
In the future, just, you can go online or contact the district office if you'd like to ask a question. Okay, moving forward, approval of consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Jennifer. Do a roll call, those in favor, Jennifer.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Jeff, aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next we'll have collaborative connections, Sarah. Thank you for coming tonight.
Welcome, Mr. Hagley. My name is Sarah Welk and I'm our district social worker and American Indian education program lead here for the district. We are in our third year of receiving the American Indian grant through the Minnesota Department of Education. So to continually meet the requirements of the grant, we've established goals and objectives as well as a parent advisory group called APAC. Which stands for American Indian Parent Advisory Council. One of the requirements to be in compliance with the grant is for the APAC group to have issued a vote of concurrence. This means the APAC group is in agreement that our school district is working to meet the various educational needs. Of American Indian students in our district. So I'm asking for the board to accept the vote of concurrence on behalf of the APAC group. So if you accept this vote, then all I would need is Mr. Olson and Mr. Hagley's signature. So what I need from you is just to say that, yep, we do accept this vote.
We need a motion for accepting the vote?
You do not need a roll call, it's just accepting the vote, it's actually the APAC that votes on it. And they're the ones that are saying that they agree that we are meeting the compliance requirements for the grant, so.
So accepting this vote, I'm sorry, say that again.
You are accepting this vote that we are in compliance and that the APAC group.
That we're just approving that we're in compliance to move forward with the grant.
Correct. Can I come up and get your autograph?
Do we need to like.
That's what I asked, is if we needed a vote.
I think we'll make a motion so we can vote on it.
So all move to approve accepting the vote by APAC.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer and a second by Melissa to approve the motion to move forward with the grant. To agree that we're in compliance with moving forward in the grant. We'll do a roll call, Jennifer.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff, aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. They told me to sign all this stuff. Thanks. Innovation leadership, Sarah McDonald with the food service update, thank you Sarah.
Good evening, I am Sarah McDonald, I'm the Monticello Food Service Director at Seduxo. Next slide. So today we're going to talk about our meal served as four-year comparison over the September through December time period since we already met in September. We're going to talk about the high. Well, I already have a high school decor remodel, our catering and presentation that we've been focusing on this year. Our nutrition services webpage updates, my favorite activity which is the nature-based apple crunch, and then what's coming next? So we can go to the next page. So first we'll talk about breakfast, breakfast is four-year comparison, September through December. You'll see breakfast, obviously with meals being free, we have had a huge surplus in breakfast. So you can see all of your numbers in your packets here from September through December of these last years. We've gotten from September of twenty eighteen where we served nine thousand one hundred fifty-one breakfasts. September of this year where we were at twenty thousand four hundred and seventy-six breakfasts. We have just grown our program, and one of the things that we will note from last year to this year. Last year we were running that was called the summer feeding, the S F S P program, so it's the summer feeding program. And this year we're using the seamless summer program, so we are only able to do five meals. Whereas last year we were able to serve a seven-meal pack for our students, and we are also able to serve meals during breaks. So during Thanksgiving, weekends, winter break, we were actually able to provide students with meals. This year we're not able to do that, we're only able to do it during in-school session days. So even if we had a snow day, a non-digital learning day, we're not able to provide meals for students. So we're only able to do in-school meals this year. So you'll see we have a little bit of drop meals this year for breakfast, but that's because we're only able to do it when students are actually physically in the building. Or on a digital learning day. So it looks like it's a little bit down this year, but that's because we're actually serving over a smaller period of days. So that's our breakfast meals, lunch has exploded as well. The kids don't eat unless it's delicious, struggled a bit with some supply chain, but we've still been able to get meals out there the kids want. High school has anywhere from ten to twelve meal choices a day. Middle school usually has about eight choices a day, elementary will have two to three choices a day. Which is really great for the kids, so there's multiple options that are available for them. And obviously, our meals program has grown from that. So this year, we've actually redecorated the high school, you'll see in the picture, my happy helpers are actually two of my four wonderful children. We were here Labor Day weekend and we were redecorating our high school. We were able to redesign, my wonderful district manager and I, Lori McMahon, along with our Seduxo team recreated that high school decor. Our Taste Four program was not the highest light, so we created something just specifically for Monticello. This program is not run out of any of our other programs, this is just for Monticello. So we have the magic market, everything is in that chalkboard wood theme. And we actually have worked with our students in the art program, so those windows right outside the school store. It has, hard to see in that picture, but if you come by the high school, it's really cool, we've had the students, artists, they'll use those chalkboards. Because they get to use chalk markers and they can draw, and we use the artists, so right now they're working on little snowflakes, it's taking them some time. But we're working with the artists to help kind of design that so that way they get to take ownership of that space as well. So we're working and seeing and we'll change it out, and it's fun, and we'll see what it looks like as the years go on. Catering and presentation, this year has been one of my focuses, I think it's really important that people eat something that looks delicious. I don't want to eat something just because it's in front of me, just because it's free doesn't mean that I want to eat it. So presentation is huge for me, I want something that looks delicious, I want our kids to eat something that's delicious. Same goes for staff, so this year, one of my challenges for our staff was when we did our staff welcome back days. Our new teacher orientation was to create something that was different, it was outside of the box. So we had meetings about what does that look like, what does the customer see, how does that look? So we pulled things out of our closets that we haven't used, catering supplies we just haven't used before. And we've created more beautiful settings, we put out tablecloths, so that way people feel more welcome. We've used supplies that we haven't used before, so different regulations are, we haven't had to, we don't have to use the same bread that we use for the kids. It doesn't have to be the same, we can use a different quality for our teachers and our catering. What does that look like, just because we've always done something doesn't mean that's how we have to do it. So I've really challenged my staff to make sure that what we're doing is making it look appealing for everyone, from our littlest learners to all of our staff members. That's high school salad bar this year is phenomenal, I would love for anybody to come out and see our high school salad bar, they've done a great job. It's beautiful, it's colorful, we have proteins on it, we have salad options on it. It is, you can see, it's very nice, it's colorful, and it's done really well. This year, Tina Burke Holder and I, along with our wellness committee, realized that our nutrition services webpage just really wasn't up to par. Didn't give all the information that we needed, so we've been reconstructing what is on our webpage, all the things that are on it. And we've actually broken it down so that way parents can go onto the webpage and not just find everything in one collateral blob of places. So you can actually go on and you can click on the different areas, and we're still redesigning. Even today, Mr. Olson and I were discussing places where I found it just didn't meet our regulations or what we were looking for, so we can still continue to update it. So our meal plan of what it is that is offered for the students will be in our regular twenty-one, twenty-two meal plan. Dietary accommodations is where anyone who has a special diet, their families can go and find that dietary accommodations, they'll find our policy. They'll find all the paperwork that they need, so they're not trying to click and point for it. Free and reduced benefits, it's all under one little section, they can click on it, they'll find everything they need, so that way they can get to that benefit section. Frequently asked questions, we found this was really important last year because there are so many questions, because there's so many changes. As we all know, last two years, everything continuously changes, there's a lot of different changes. Health and wellness is where we update all of our wellness committee things, all of our policies, our meetings, notes. I put some stuff in there from apple crunch day, so we update just nice things we're working on, what else can we put on there? We know we're going to be working on stuff from the last meeting, just suggestions, nutrition recipes for families, just ways that families can know to get out and be more health-aware. Our non-discrimination statement has to be on the webpage, so it has a section, and then the unpaid meal policy is also available. It's still a work in progress, but it's definitely something that we've been working on within the last couple of months. Still my favorite activity, I was able to get out and do it again this year, on October fourteenth, we went out and I went out. I taught our preschool and kindergarten kids about our apple crunches, I talked to them and our teachers and asked, I was like, is it the same kids as last year? And they're like, no, we have a lot of new kids, so I went out and worked with our preschoolers and our kindergartners, we learned about apples. I got apples from our Deer Lake Orchard, we were able to learn about apples and then all crunch together. And then actually I got these great thank yous from our kiddos, they're hanging in my office, I love them. I brought some over to Pinewood as well, because they send a bunch of, so we've been decorating their little office area as well, so that way they can feel the appreciation. Those kids really love getting those hot meals. And obviously thank you to their staff out there for letting me come out and work with the students. Sometimes it's hard to get out and do the education portion of my, my job, especially with the short staffing. So what's next, trying to get back into a little bit more of normalcy as we can. We've stepped away a little bit from sampling, this year we're going to try to get some more of that in there. We're getting these dumplings and they actually are in the high school right now, I just have to get the day to do it, we're going to try to sample these with the high school students. Let them try them, before we put them out on the menu, we want to make sure they like them, I don't want to spend money on something the students aren't going to eat. We are going to relaunch our share tables, that way the kids, they don't want something rather than throwing it away. We're going to have them re, be able to put those items for kids who do want them, and we're going to relaunch that. We're also working on some student education meal posters, these ones are up right now at the high school and the middle school, we put them up today. We're going to be working with the students and teaching them about those meal serving sizes, so that way they, they know what is a reimbursable meal look like. We're all needing to relearn now that we're back in school, education is what we're doing. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you.
Any questions?
All right, thank you so much.
Hey, moving on, financial forecast, Tina?
All right, tonight we have our financial forecast, so you can move on to the next slide Gavin. So why do we do a financial forecast, it helps us kind of predict where we're heading financially. The chart shows our unassigned fund balance, where we've been and kind of where we're heading. So you can see we did have a low point in two thousand eighteen where our fund balance was below six percent. And so we're gradually climbing back up to our eight percent goal in our fund balance policy. And we'll kind of go through the next couple of slides going over the forecast. So we'll go over budget timelines, we'll go over our base year, taking a look at the budget for this year, twenty-one, twenty-two. Revising that budget, what's our base, look at different budget assumptions, and then we'll take a look at a couple forecast scenarios. So in our budget timeline, we started with our preliminary tax levy. We look at enrollment projections in November, start working on the budget revision in December. And today, looking at the forecasts, and then that'll start the budget process for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So in our forecasts, Gavin, next slide, it's only our general fund, which is our K twelve education activities. It does not include our special ed cooperative. When the state looks at our general fund activity, it includes the special ed cooperative where they purchase the employees under the Monticello contract. So I'm not going over that in here, so we keep the co-op employees separate, but just so you kind of know what we're looking at. So with our budget for this year, on the revenue side, I revised the budget. Initially, we started the year at an estimate of forty-eight point seven million. It has increased two million to fifty point almost nine million. We did see an increase in enrollment, so additional kids showed up, so that affected our local property taxes, because that is dependent on the number of kids coming into the schools. It also increased our state sources with that additional enrollment coming in, and other state aids that have ties to enrollment numbers. We saw an increase in federal sources or federal aids grants, we had COVID testing that was made available to schools in August. So it wasn't known in June when we adopted the budget. We had our cares technology money carryover, the gear cares dollars, so not a lot of our devices were able to come in by June thirtieth. So that rolled over into this school year, so that'll be used up this year if all devices come in. And then other grants that were revised, and just a little bit of activity revenue coming in to increase our revenue budget. This just shows the pie chart of how our revenues are allocated in our general fund. So seventy-four percent of our revenue is state aid, property tax only is about seventeen percent. And then our federal and other sources kind of rounds out the whole revenue budget. On the expense side, our original budget had fifty point three million, and that increased one point two million to fifty point five, fifty-one point five million. We had additional staff that we added due to the increased enrollment. And some more leaves of absences with staff, staffing that we currently have. We did see a decrease in our health insurance premiums, when we had the HITA process, our Health Insurance Transparency Act process. Where we had to go out for bids for health insurance, we secured a zero percent, percent change in our health premiums for three years. So that was a good surprise for us in August. So that lowered our employee benefits, but at the same time, there is some increase in benefits with additional staff that was hired. The other categories that are not employee or staff related, our purchase services increased with our long-term facility maintenance projects. Our nature-based leases increased with additional site. Payments to schools, whether it's for college in the schools or special ed services, nursing services were changed in our budget. And then supplies and capital outlay increased with our technology department and building supply carryovers. The next slide has our pie chart of our expenditure budget, so you can see a large portion of our budget is salaries and benefits, about seventy-eight percent. So that is taking a look at a revised budget, and so now we'll go into the different forecast assumptions, and we start off with our enrollment. In November, I did an enrollment projection presentation, so the, the top line is the enrollment projection that happened at that meeting. And that includes all the students that are in our building, so they might be Monticello students, or they might be special ed cooperative students. The red line on the bottom is what we actually get money for, so just the Monticello students, the special ed co-op students flows through the special ed cooperative. So with this graph, you can see we have pretty flat enrollment with a little bit of slight decline. So what does that mean for our forecast, we have a decrease in enrollment for year one, a little bit of an increase in year two, and then just slight declines in years three, four, five. Looking at revenue assumptions.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Yeah.
You're talking about your projection, November fifteenth meeting, you basing your budget out of your projection?
The lower line, the red line. So the last legislative session in, for two thousand twenty-one, we do know that we'll get two percent increase in our general education aid for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. But after that, it is unknown. We have our state special ed funding that we get based on kind of our current structure with our special ed cooperative where it's just Becker Big Lake. where it's just Becker, Big Lake, and Monticello. In the forecast, I have reduced title federal funds allocations and compensatory funds due to lower number of families that are qualifying for free and reduced meal benefits. And then in here, we have our federal funds with ESRS rounds one, two, three, COVID testing, and our governor's summer programming. For staffing assumptions, I always assume we have at least three certified retirements each year in our general fund. But we do tend to get more, but just in the forecast, I think three is a good number to keep in there. And then changes on our certified staffing will vary depending on which scenario you pick and kind of the assumptions we move forward, so nothing's really set there yet. On the expense side.
Sorry, can I ask another question? So when you're, when you're budgeting for three certified retirements each year, what's the dollar amount that you're budgeting for a retired individual? I know they're probably, they're obviously going to be different, but.
Yep, I use an average of twenty-five thousand per retirement.
That's what the savings that takes place when individuals retire from the new hire.
With either lower salary or somebody going from a family coverage to a single coverage.
The twenty-five includes your salary and your benefits, is what you're figuring?
Yes.
And it depends on how we hire, you know?
Everything I say, budgets and forecasts are estimates, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, so that's my average. The salary benefit that are estimated in the forecast are based on contracts that are settled and then budget parameters set by the board moving forward. Our non-salary, non-benefit expenses increasing anywhere from zero to eight percent. Eight percent for utilities or transportation expenses, whereas zero for staff development, supply allocations. We won't have to borrow short term as the state has still funded schools at getting ninety percent of our aid during the year and ten percent after the year. And that our total expenditures will end up about point five percent under budget. We just tend to budget conservatively, so I know that we tend to come under budget each year.
You talk about no short-term borrowing, is that due to because the savings or the delays or payment to you? Or is that because of a certain dollar amount within our general fund?
It's because the state isn't delaying our payments more than the ninety percent, ten percent. So the lowest that we've gone or schools have gone was about sixty-five percent of our aid was received during the year and thirty-five percent after the year, so that really stretched what schools got during the year. And they had to borrow short term just to kind of make sure they had cash on hand and make sure they had payroll.
So if you short-term borrow like that, does the state help you recoup those dollars that you're?
Nope, it'll be a school expense, so. When I had to short-term borrow at a different district, it was almost the price of a certified staff. It was between seventy to ninety thousand in interest cost. Our fund balance assumptions, we have an unassigned, undesignedated fund balance goal of eight to sixteen percent. So trying to stay within those parameters. We have a committed severance fund balance that we use for severance costs with our retirees, so that's being spent down. And that our carryover balances will be on hold and evaluated each year with our school buildings and departments. Other assumptions, we have our other post-employment trusts that we use for non-certified employee retiree insurance costs. So we'll continue to utilize that. So those are kind of all the assumptions going into the forecast. And then I'll have two scenarios that go over different, slightly different assumptions. So if it's scenario one, assuming we'll have general education aid increases of two percent each year that we, you know, going into the future that we don't know about. This scenario also has a one-time budget alignment reduction of three point one million for the, going into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. If you recall from our levy referendum, it was going to generate about three point one million. Since that failed, we need to align our budget to get back on track. So that'll keep us above ground for three years. So we'll end close to six percent in our fund balance for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This is just a summary of the revenues and expenses and what it means towards our fund balance. So I project we'll end the twenty-one, twenty-two school year at about seven point seven percent. Going into next year, almost ten percent with that budget alignment. And slowly expenditures are exceeding revenues in years two and three. We'll be just below nine percent and then six percent in twenty-four, twenty-five. Scenario two looks at splitting up that budget alignment plan over two years. So just doing two point one million going into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and then one point four million into twenty-three, twenty-four. And kind of holding our own going into twenty-four, twenty-five and still ending about at that six percent fund balance. So again, a summary of the revenues and expenditures for each year. You can see still projecting to end the year, seven point seven percent for twenty-one, twenty-two. And then just under eight percent for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and then almost six percent for twenty-four, twenty-five. So this graph has a couple different gauges. The purple bar going down is statutory operating debt, where if your fund balance is at a negative two point five percent, the state will come in and take over and tell you how to run to get back on track. The reddish bar is our eight percent fund balance goal. The blue bar upright is scenario one, we're doing the one-year budget alignment going into twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And then the peachy tan one is scenario two, spreading that over two years. So you can see we're kind of almost ending at the same point for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So these were the only two scenarios that I created for our forecast today. If there's other scenarios you want to see moving forward, just let me know. Hopefully, we'll kind of have a guide of where, of the budget assumptions you want in place at our February meeting so that we know kind of where to go in our budget process that we have to adopt in June for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Any other questions or thoughts?
Were in year one or year two of the two percent?
This year is year one, and we got actually two point four five percent. And year two, next year, is the state approved the two percent.
Okay, so I'm looking at scenario one. You have like twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three at the forty-eight million expenditures. Then you make your cut and then the expenditures go back up to fifty million. What are those additional two million dollars expenditures? I mean, not exact, you don't have to tell me exactly, but what are we, what are we thinking that we're going to keep spending in two million dollars from?
Well, one thing that kind of skews the forecast is our long-term facility maintenance budget. So it's project-driven, where if you took it out, you might see a more steady revenue coming in and out because one year we could have one and a half million of projects and one year we could add only a half million of projects. So some of that is in there, so it kind of passes some of that up.
So when we're looking at that twenty-three, twenty-four, we're saying fifty million dollars. It could actually be forty-nine million dollars if, if the need for less projects takes place or if we decide not to do certain projects?
Yes, and so the long-term facility maintenance activity doesn't affect the fund balance bottom line because the revenue coming in for long-term facility maintenance and the projects is a different fund balance.
Sorry, anybody else have questions? Okay, I think we're good, thanks Tina.
I know, just one last comment. You know, with the recent forecast at the state, there's been a surplus and I'm fine with keeping our forecast projection at two percent for our general education aid just knowing that the state also has to replenish their unemployment trust account with the federal government. So I don't see that schools will see a large increase in their general education aid.
You don't ever know what the state's going to do after we are.
Yep, this year, since it's an off year or a, a year in the biennium that they don't have to approve a budget, we don't always see a change in our education funding.
They would, they would say, hey, we have an extra million dollars, so we're going to increase the education fund. I mean, that's never happened before, has it?
Sometimes they tweak it, but it's probably when we've been at like zero or one percent to get us closer to that two percent.
And I think we can all do is, is be active with our legislators, I know talking with a few last week. It does seem like the two biggest requests right now coming from the state are healthcare and education. So I think there is a push to address education right now from constituents, so. Like Jennifer said, I don't know that it's going to, you know, you don't know, but. The feeling of a, a need for those two being the largest voices right now.
Well, if I know from your history, you probably won't plan on that, so.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion for this?
Nope, this was just for information.
Oh, do you have the next thing too? Hey, all yours, sorry. Get out of your way.
So at our last board meeting, we approved new check signers with the change in the board structure. But we also have to approve annually the people that are authorized to make electronic wire transfers. So I am asking the board to approve the following employees as authorized personnel to make electronic wire transfers. Eric Olson Superintendent, Tina Burkholder Director of Business Services, Zach Carey, Payroll Coordinator, and Amy Stalbach Controller.
So moved, second.
Melissa makes a motion to approve the following employees as authorized personnel to make electronic wire transfers. Eric Olson, Tina Burkholder, Zach Carey, Amy Stalbach, and Jennifer seconds the motion. All those in favor, Jennifer?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Jeff, aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Bruce, motion approved, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, we'll have a CAP presentation, Teaching and Learning. Welcome everyone.
Good evening, and we have a couple of members who are online with us as well. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about our CAP program that started this fall in Monticello. And I have a team of people here who are going to explain that to you. But I just wanted to let you know that we started this through a grant that we applied for last February and we received in May. So this is a grant, grant through Purpatch and, and through the state of Minnesota. So I want to introduce to you my team. So first of all, I am a co-chair of the CAP committee along with Miranda Urick, who is, we can't see her, but she's online. Miranda is a Pinewood Elementary music teacher. I'm sorry, art teacher, fine art teacher, art teacher. And then also, we have Trish Abel, who is an art teacher, visual art teacher at the high school. And then we have Jen Mackey, who is music teacher at Eastview, formerly known as band teacher at the middle school. And then we have Ben Lundquist, who is with Monte Arts, but he's also our online school coordinator at the high school and a behavior specialist at the high school, behavior management specialist. So he wears a lot, a lot of hats, but he's our connection to the community. And Amy Herfindal is online too, so Amy Herfindal is choir at the middle school, so she's also online. Can you say hello, ladies?
Hi, thanks for having us.
Hi.
All right. Okay, Gavin, can you go one more slide? Thank you. So I would like to just tell you a little bit about what CAP is. CAP stands for Comprehensive Arts Planning Programming. And this program provides assistance to districts as they plan to implement comprehensive school arts program. And when I say arts, I mean everything under the umbrella of arts. Music, visual arts, media arts, theater and dance. CAP is based on the belief that the arts are essential components to everyone's basic education. This is funded through state legislature and the Purpatch Center for the Arts. The Purpatch Center is a wonderful program and is a statewide partner with MDE that provides and manages our standards in the arts and for other stakeholders. We are one of eight schools that receive the CAP grant out of, I believe, about fifteen applying for this year.
So the process of CAP is a three-year process. We're in year one, which is building the capacity and leadership of the CAP committee. And it's a developing a three-year plan, which we are in the process of doing. The strategic draft is due to Purpatch by March, early March. We are almost there. Year two is first implementation and evaluation of that plan. And year three, which should be two school years from now, assessment and implications for practice. The CAP funds, you should know, is just for PD. It just is paying, it's a twenty-five hundred dollars in year one and twenty-five hundred dollars in year two with no dollars after that. So it's not actually for funding of, of programs. But it does give us the ability to work, plan, and provide subs and other costs. I think we're in the second one, Amy?
So we, as a group, were able to, together, we've done a few, a few work sessions together with both Purpatch as well as, as well as some, some small group sessions together. And our mission and vision have been very clear. The mission is to align our arts curriculum K-12 with the new twenty-eight art standards coming through MDE and again sponsored by Purpatch. To increase the visibility of the arts through community collaboration and to create equitable opportunities for all students at all levels. The vision statement, we really wanted to marry to our school's vision statement to promote and foster learning through the arts of creativity, imagination, and innovation for every kid, every day.
I just want to share with you some fine art programming that we have in place for our schools. We have a vibrant visual arts program in grades one through five, grade seven, and then at the high school in nine through twelve. We have music education in grades K through twelve. Some community partnerships that we share is that we host a yearly district art show. We have work on view that's at K through twelve. We have K through twelve music concerts. We are, with the middle school art programming, they are partnering with Alliance Club. We have just this year started a high school art club with Monte Arts. And also, along with Monte Arts, they are in the process of providing internships in the arts as well. And then we see a list of extracurricular activities that we also are, offer such as art club. We do a juried visual arts showcase at the high school. Music concerts in grade, or contests in grades nine through twelve. We have jazz band, fiddle club, chamber singers, treble chamber singers, honor band and honor choir, dance team, pop band, and then a high school musical in one act in the drama department.
As part of our strategic planning that comes through Purpatch, we needed to set up three goals that would really drive our work and drive our purpose together. Our first goal is that in three years, we'll develop collaborative community connections through the arts. Second is to implement arts programming and professional development at all levels. And within three years, Monte Public Schools will individualize their opportunities in the arts in order to reach all students. And then we do have a drafting process of our strategic plan. It will be available to you as soon as we submit to Purpatch.
The process has been very rewarding personally, and I know I can speak for the rest of the committee. And even when there's needs and challenges, it's still rewarding to see the, the things that we've already done and what we can do. So some of the, we have a couple of things to talk about for needs and challenges. Obviously, we want a continuous ability intentionally to provide curriculum content and that kind of a time in order to address those standards, especially grades K through eight. Where there, that we may not have all of those things. One of the challenges with, they call it the twenty-eighteen standards, but really we're just now starting to implement them across the state is that currently the MDE requires to offer a minimum of three fine arts courses under those five areas and require two. And at this time, we are not in compliance at the middle school, there's a link to MDE. I don't think that we are the only ones. I don't think that we are the only ones. I think that's a statewide concern. There's a need for authentic Minnesota Native American resources and performances, K through 12. Purbridge Center is doing a wonderful job of trying to address that as well, providing resources and possibly some site visits. And then offerings in the arts should reflect our changing demographics. And that's something that we should be intentional about as well. I think you can.
Miranda, are you?
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. A few other needs and challenges or opportunities for growth. The CAP committee sees the need to balance student scheduling to allow more opportunities for the arts. As a mother of a high schooler, I know there's been times when she feels like she kind of has to pick between certain classes in the arts and can't really maybe enjoy both sometimes of the arts that are offered there. The next point would be that CAP can, could function as a think tank or, and/or involve interested schools, staff, community members, and students. We really see the need to keep arts alive in our thinking and planning moving forward. Lastly, a need for interdisciplinary learning. This requires collaboration and professional development time for teachers. Arts can be integrated with all subjects or disciplines, and we feel that providing opportunities for all staff would benefit the arts programming as well.
Pull my weight here. Yeah, so opportunities and pilots this school year. So we started a few really interesting things. And just, you know, I have the pleasure of working in the high school and in the community at Monti Arts for the city. And in my opinion, the community thrives when artistic stuff thrives. So yeah, so there's collaboration with community programs, initiatives, and events through Monti Arts. The district art show will be held at a Monti Arts building. Monticello Glow Parade, so that's, yeah, in a few weeks here, we're all going to celebrate the longer days and the coming of the sun, kind of. So we're all going to use different lights and glowing objects and have a parade down Walnut Street. So kind of a cool thing.
This is Ben and his family.
Yeah. Yep. So someone back here put that up there? So, yeah, so we're going to craft things. We're actually working with the high school students and the art clubs to make these big birds. So it's going to be interesting. Light up. So pep band at Monticello Middle School, we have Monticello High School Art Club, and then visual art and music at the nature-based sites, K through five.
Okay, so our hope, it's easy to get distracted with wants and needs. As long as we can keep our, you know, eye on what we really hope to see in programming and how it can benefit our students and the community at large. Here's kind of a list of some hopes we came up with as a committee. We hope to create a robust arts programming in ISDA 82. We hope that students are able to have arts opportunities at all levels. We hope to be a model district in our area for quality arts programming. We hope to create pathways for students to be able to have an academic experience that provides many opportunities for their individual success. We hope to create arts programs that support students' academics as well as social, emotional, and mental health well-being. And we hope to provide opportunities for career development in the arts.
So the support we need from you as a board or as a community is for you to come out and support our programming in our district. You can do that through attending concerts, art exhibits, our plays that the schools put on. So just to be able to support us personally with those endeavors that they're doing. And then also help to formulate options to support arts financially in our district. Treat them as an equal priority to other content areas. And then if you're interested in joining the CAP committee, we'd love to have you. So feel free to let me know and we'll add you to the committee. And at this point, if you have any questions, we have a great team here to answer your questions.
What is the grant for?
Money is for two years, but our planning for professional development is over three.
Is this an opportunity to continue to apply for this grant, receive it?
Every two years, you can reapply for the grant.
Seems like there's a lot of cool things that are just being fortunate if like, you don't get the grant and then all of a sudden you're like,
Yep.
start all these great things and do all this planning and then.
Yeah. It's important with the professional development piece because we don't have enough money for professional development oftentimes. So because this is just completely earmarked for professional development, it gives our teachers the opportunity. So, yep, we will reapply every two years.
Question in regards to the grade level specific courses. So someone online said that their daughter at the high school couldn't take maybe both of the classes. Is it because it's grade specific, so then she'd never have the opportunity going forward to take that specific class, or?
Miranda, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. You know, I think early, you know, ninth grade, she, there's, you know, a lot of, not a lot of choices. And oftentimes, those arts classes are kind of listed as electives in a way, which they are, but they are also required standards for graduation as well. So when she was kind of picking her path, it was, I can use ninth grade year as an example. She's a 10th grader now, but she either was only able to either choose like visual arts, like intro to art, or choir, or, you know, one of the music classes. Her schedule didn't allow for her to be able to take both of those courses throughout the year. So last year she took choir, she enjoyed it. This year she's taking visual art, she's really enjoying that as well. But there, I just know there's a handful of students out there, besides my own daughter, that would maybe like opportunities at every grade level to be able to take a mixture of arts courses. And, you know, side note there, we don't really have dance or theater taught by, and, yeah, that's kind of a side note there, but she felt a little limited as to what she could take versus what she had to take in terms of arts programs and classes.
Part of that just has to do with what's left in their schedule to choose as a ninth grader.
Yeah, you're a little bit more limited in ninth, yep.
Like it's always important to draw out, you know, the importance of the Purbridge Center and what they do and research that goes into doing what's good for kids. So it's not that just we believe here in Monticello, but it's looking at, you know, decades of research from researchers like John Hattie, who have creativity programs in the top, one of them, the creativity programs is in the top 20 ways of positively impacting student achievement. So I think it's always important, you know, as we do this, that there is some great research. It's not just, you know, the research of just our people and what we feel, but it's connected to a greater cause always. And then that's why centers like that contracted through the state of Minnesota. That's what they're looking for, is make sure that we have, or that we're able to bring programs forward that are great for kids. So thanks for doing that work, and it's hard work because a lot of times during budget season and things like that, you're trying to weigh in what's important. And I would like to always talk about what's important is what's, you know, what's good for kids and what does the research say is good for kids, so.
Thank you, Eric.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clay. Special education funding.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm here tonight to present a resolution in support of the congressional idea Full Funding Act. This is a resolution that was encouraged to us, brought to us by MSBA, the Minnesota School Board Association, and something that they brought to school districts around the state on behalf of kind of the national organization and are encouraging school boards to approve, largely to draw attention to the issue and to encourage legislation, as was discussed earlier. Just trying to work on behalf of districts to increase funding to education. This resolution specifically goes towards authorizing a 10-year plan to fully fund the federal share of IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. As the board knows, and many are aware by now, the costs of mandated special education services, which are incredibly valuable, important, and worthwhile, exceed the funding that we get to put those programs, people in places. And this Funding Act calls on federal government to fund it at a higher rate and help reduce the cross subsidies that many school districts are facing right now, which in turn impacts the general budget and is impacting education funding everywhere. I can read the full resolution unless someone on the board prefers to, so. I will do it.
Start, I'll read the be it resolved part, so then you start at the beginning, I'll read the end.
Perfect, yep. Whereas the Monticello School District recognizes the need for a strong investment in the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act IDEA. And whereas the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act was first enacted in 1975 to help ensure that all students with disabilities will have access to a free, appropriate public education. In IDEA's enactment more than 45 years ago, the current federal investment in IDEA is less than 14%. And whereas with the enactment of IDEA, the United States Congress committed to fund up to 40% of the additional costs of special education, thereby promising to provide up to 40% of the national average per pupil expenditure, which is currently estimated at $13,828 by the U.S. Department of Education. And whereas our nation's school districts face an increased demand for greater resources to fulfill the needs of students under IDEA, including those for students affected by multiple disabilities whose individual education plans require more resources. And whereas with each increase in the IDEA child count, the Monticello School Board and others throughout the country continue to adjust their budgets to accommodate this increased need and ensure that each child educated through IDEA receives the appropriate supports, with some school districts dedicating 40% or more of their general education budgets to special education services. And whereas Monticello School District has a $4,698,750 cross subsidy for fiscal year 2020, which is a one, which is one part of a statewide cross subsidy that was more than $673 million in fiscal year 2020 and is expected to grow to $806 million by fiscal year 2025.
It resolved that the Monticello School Board supports the IDEA Full Funding Act that will help strengthen the federal investment in special education. The authority is seeing a 10-year plan to fully fund the federal share of IDEA and be it resolved that the Monticello School Board urges Congress's strong bipartisan support for a passage of the IDEA Full Funding Act. And now therefore be it resolved by the Monticello School Board remains committed to providing students with disabilities and their families the supports they need.
Second.
Resolution read by Jennifer, seconded by Melissa. Do a roll call vote. All those in favor? Jennifer?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeff, aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0. Thank you, Clay. That is the end of the meeting?
One more.
Oh, one more. Sorry. Barb, I'm sorry.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, I'm going to, because everything's in blue and you're, it wasn't black, so I was sorry. On my agenda.
I have just a short update for you related to COVID and some of the issues that are affecting our staffing in particular and our case counts, so. First of all, we really continue to see staffing shortages across the district. So again, it's really important that parents keep their children home when they're sick and that staff continue to stay home when they're sick. That probably sounds like a, you know, crossed message there, but really staying home when you're sick for the required quarantine time will reduce the overall total cases that we experience. So we know it's hard to stay home, but we're just asking for continued support of that. The Supreme Court decision to strike down proof of vaccination took place on Thursday, January 20th. So as of that date, we continue to comply with programs, the two programs we talked about last time that fall under federal and state guidelines, still requiring proof of vaccination. But for all other employees, we've kind of halted the whole process. So that means that, you know, we have fewer incidents where we're working with staff through the process of what they can do to comply and what we can do to help with that, trying to make it win, win easy as we can on both sides, so. The COVID cases in the district have come to a high peak in the last few weeks. So we do have the dashboard that, Gavin, you can go to the next slide. The majority of these cases are in the high school. So this isn't like consistently high across the district. It is the high school, our students in particular, as you can see from this graph, so. We watch that very closely. If we get to any of our trigger marks where we would require masking or do different things, we'll keep you advised as the board. So far, we're staying under that. Any kind of trigger, no. So we also have stayed in touch with Wright County and with the state of Minnesota. Just wondering when or if those vaccination requirements will change for even those two programs. And if they do, we will go with that. So staying in touch, but at this point, there hasn't been a change to those two programs. So we just continue to work with our staff. Our staff has been very cooperative, very open to talking with us about what's going on for them personally. And we've really been able to work through a lot of situations, so. And just to continue to comply with that, we will start some weekly testing at Eastview in the middle of February for those staff that work in those programs as well. So those are my updates. Short. Any questions from the board?
I just appreciate, I mean, I got to see the admin at Eastview and yourself working with our employees and taking care of them. You know, things changed that one time, or at that court decision date, but we continue to work with those people and I think have them at a good spot, but we're getting some check-ins as I see from you guys.
Lots of check-ins.
So it's just real important to know that we're doing everything we can to live with the federal rules, but take care of people and make sure that we draw some consistency to the rules that nobody else currently has. So it's hard to do, but we're doing it, I think, pretty dang good.
Little extra TLC for them, so.
Well, thank you, Eastview administration. I know it's not easy to navigate something that's as unclear as clear as mud, I guess, so, thanks.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, Barb. That is the end of the meeting. Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Jamie to adjourn. Do a roll call vote. All those in favor? Jennifer?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Jeff, aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Meeting is adjourned at the time of 7:02. We will come back to work session at 10 minutes, 7:12.